Good as I do.
Yeah.
Oh, you're not?
No.
Okay. Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is the December 19th, 2017 City Council Meeting. We are now in session at 7:30. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know where those guys are all heck golf road building up at. You know, for the special tax thing. I know that one guy's a lawyer, one guy at the end.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
Here.
Gallagher.
Here.
Banjer.
Here.
Deistis.
Present.
Veenbos.
Present.
With seven present, we do have a court. We do have a quorum. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from the December 15th, 2017 Council Meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Bud Matts has made that. Do I have a sec? We have a second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. We have no mayor's report tonight. Are there ward reports? Seeing no board reports, this now brings us to part of the meeting which is open to the public for 20 minutes. We have two individuals that have signed in. The council meeting is now open to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are not on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the city council as a whole through the mayor and vanity may not be used in any form. The first signatory is Donna Bessisi.
Good evening and welcome for coming forward. Thank you. Thank you. I'm Donna Bessisi. I'm here to speak about the antenna. As all of you know, I am on the Park Board of Commissioners, but I'm here as a resident, not representing the board in any way. My comments stem from some concern that I have about the way in which this is moving forward. Not that you guys want to change or amend your codes. It's perfectly within your rights to do so. It's the way in which they're going forward and basing it on Senate Bill 1451. In clarification of the purpose of 1451, I've actually called and spoken to a representative from Senator Terry Link's office, who was the sponsor of the bill, as well as personally spoke to Representative Kelly Burke, who was the House sponsor of the bill. I also spoke to staff at Senator Michael Hastings' office. I personally spoke to Laura Murphy and Representative Tom Morrison regarding what the purpose of the bill was, to get their feel for why they were putting forth this bill. Was it a bill that was intended to limit cell use for communities or to give more power to municipalities to limit cell companies from wanting to be in a town? Or was it actually designed to broaden that? And stating from Section 5 legislation, stating from, I'm sorry, the first part of the bill says, "The legislative intent is that small wireless facilities are critical to developing wireless access to advanced technology broadband and 911 services to homes, businesses, and schools in Illinois. Because of the integral role that the delivery of wireless technology plays in the economic vitality of the state of Illinois and in the lives of its citizens, the General Assembly has determined that a law addressing, excuse me, the development of wireless technology is of vital interest to the state to ensure that public and private Illinois consumers continue to benefit from these services as soon as possible and to ensure that providers of wireless access has a fair and predictable process for the deployment of small wireless facilities in the manner consistent with the character of the area in which the small wireless facilities are deployed. The General Assembly is enacting this act which specifies how local authorities may regulate the co-creation of small wireless facilities." In general, I asked them specifically, does this pertain to the situation that we're in? The antenna that's going to be erected in the park? And they said, no, this actually pertains to small wireless antenna on existing facilities. And then Laura Murphy actually talked to the legal staff of her office and called me back a few days later and specifically said, there is no limitation whatsoever in the bill that specifies any tower about 45 feet. There's nothing in the bill that regulates 45 feet for a standing tower. It has to do with antenna on top of towers. So that's the majority of what I wanted to talk about and also that I went to deliver flowers, which I do sometimes to help out my brother. And I was in the Mundeline area as well as other Barrington, South Barrington areas and found several cell towers, much larger than ours, much more horrifically ugly than ours. But this one in particular I found to be very interesting because it has a picture of the actual amount of space it's going to take up for the generator on the bottom. And the tower was built directly behind a house. Literally, the guy who owns the house could throw a frisbee and hit the antenna. And these houses, I called a local real estate agent from two different offices. The one I spoke to at greater length was from Century 21. They indicated these houses sell for around 340 to 475. And I asked her, do they have any trouble selling these houses? Is there any problem or concern that they have regarding resale of the houses? Has she had anyone express concern? She said, not really. I have more people worried about the wires that come from the electronics in their backyard than they would about cell towers. And I put pictures forward. I didn't have enough because my printer was working, but if anyone's interested in seeing them, I have pictures to show. This is directly behind these people's house and they don't seem to have an issue with it. Thank you.
Mr. Vol, will you lead? Thank you, Ms. Bessisi. The other signatory is Robin. I believe we're on a first-name basis now.
I think so. Okay, now this microphone is not good at all. Okay. First of all, I feel bad that this was dumped in your laps. And I blame it all on the park district, the failure to work and communicate with the city and the residents. There was no sign posted like the one by Dominix. Six people received a letter that was deceiving, never even mentioning that Verizon was putting up a tower. And we also received the letter August 21st, and yet their contract was signed July. So shows me that, I guess they thought they had a done deal. Three people from the zoning board voted down the height because it would hurt the property values. They recognize this. Study shows that property values will be hurt between 15 and 20 percent. If you go on Google and Google it, there are thousands of sites that will tell you it will hurt your property value. That being said, I want to say that Mr. McCall came to us with his expertise and came up with some great information. Stop and wanted to remark, oh, sorry, and was recommended to be proactive. I think we should be proactive. Putting the towers down to 45 would stop cell companies coming into residential areas and putting up the 75 and 110 ones. Nobody wants these in their backyard and nobody wants them throughout the city. They will multiply like rabbits. Mr. Lynch noted at one of his meetings that 110-foot cell tower didn't even cover to 53 and Kirchhoff. The reply that he got from this, I think it's pronounced Groar, replied, another tower would be needed there, so now you're talking a second tower that could be going up. We need to be proactive. We need to keep the towers down to 45. If they need the extra footage, put it on buildings, put it in industrial areas, keep them out of residential. I just need to say that zoning laws need to be updated and they need to be revised, and proactively is the way to do it. And it's by dropping it to 45. I also hold in my hand 227 signatures that says they don't want the tower in residential or in their parks. They need to be heard, just like anybody that's in residential. We don't want these towers in our one. Put them somewhere else. But we do need the towers. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. That is our signatories for tonight. That brings the councils' ordinances in for the second reading. Ordinance A would repeal the sunset provision for the wheel tax to. It's the second reading. This ordinance, if adopted, would repeal the sunset provision for the wheel tax. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Deistis has made that and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bud Matts?
I'd like to make a motion that there's amendment to this, that the sunset provision be extended to an expiration date of 12/31/2018. My goal in doing so is to eliminate the wheel tax altogether and replace it with the tax on natural gas. By doing so, the cost to collect the tax would be greatly decreased. Citizen irritation with the vehicle stickers and penalties on stickers would be eliminated and the police would be free to enforce laws not related to collection of revenue and for the benefit of the city. Should the council decide next year not to seek an alternative tax idea and to fund road improvements, the wheel tax could be extended. However, by setting an end date and suggesting viable alternatives, this gives us a year to budget and to plan and to move ahead on an alternative to vehicle stickers. As a business owner in a town where they remove their wheel tax, it has been very refreshing and convenient not to have to worry about a vehicle sticker every time I buy another company vehicle. So I ask that we extend the sunset period for one year.
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
Do we have a second? Mr. Gallagher, have you made that motion? Any further discussion on this motion?
Thank you. I'm not interested in supporting this motion because if we want to end the wheel tax, we can at any time. It's a use tax. The people who are driving are paying it, so I support it. If we want to talk natural gas tax, we can talk that at a future date also, but I'm not going to be supporting the motion to postpone this. I'm sorry, the motion to continue the sunset provision. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Banjer. Further comments? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a good idea to extend it for the one year because at least that way we'd have a sunset at the end of that. You know, the fear I have is, we all know sitting up here, the problems we're having with road funding. If we eliminate this and we don't sell them next June, where are we going to get the $500,000 from? So I think, I think Mr. Bud Matts' proposal is a reasonable thought to just keep them in place. Do we have alternatives in place to take that revenue? We can't afford to cut any more money out of the road fund. We'll have no roads done if we do that. So I'm in full support of doing it for one more year. Thank you.
Mr. Cannon? Mr. Veenbos?
Yeah, my understanding is Alderman, Bud, and Matts, that you would want to just extend this for one more year. Is that exactly what you're just trying to accomplish then?
Just one more year and then when we talk about alternatives in taxing next year, January, February, we can talk through those things, but it's just giving us a deadline, if you will, rather than extending it forever or extending it for another five years, is the law originally read.
Okay. With that in mind, I would support this and I understand what you're trying to accomplish and something worth investigating and maybe staff can get us some more information before we make the next decision. Are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? Mr. Deistis?
I read here that says, this, the wheel tax is a tax dedicated to repairing or servicing and reconstructing the city's roadways and is intended to continue into the future. So I guess I'm not sure, are we, am I being misled by taking the sunset provision off that this tax is going to stop?
Mr. McCall? I think I'll ask the Finance Director, Ms. Gallagher, to answer that question, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. In discussions with the city attorney and also Mr. Crumstock, the city manager, even if you remove the sunset provision, you would still have the tax, so you can still have the tax even without, with a sunset provision removed. So by extending it, as Alderman, Bud Matts has said, that would give time for staff to come back with some alternative information to you as we move forward in the preparing for Budget 2019.
Okay. Because as I recall, when we put a sunset on here, it was to create a discussion to see whether we wanted to continue doing this, this particular tax or any tax that's got the sunset clause on there. So whether we extend it for another year or we take it off, I don't think is, is an issue. I think the sunset just creates, forces the council to have a discussion on whether we should continue to do city stickers or not. And as has been said, I see this as more of a use tax. I have been against a gas, natural gas tax for as many years as it's been brought up. I'm not about to change my mind, but it's six in one or half dozen of other whether we extend it for a year or take it off because right now city stickers are going to be remaining unless somebody has another way to come up with $500,000 into our budget. So it makes no difference. It's, I don't see the importance of it one way or another, so.
And you have, Mr.?
Yeah, the truth is, is that we only collect $400,000 because we spend $100,000 to collect the $500,000 in the wheel tax. So it's a $400,000 tax. So for me, I think it's, it's kind of cumbersome and foolish to spend $100,000 to collect $500,000. I think we could do it much more effectively in other ways. So I'm looking to just bring this up before the council again and not kick the bucket down the road, down, this thing down the road five years or indefinitely by removing the sunset provision.
I am absolutely fine to remove it and have a conversation, I mean, to extend it and have a conversation about it in the future. No, I have no problem with that.
Agreed.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Banjer?
No.
Deistis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, the motion does pass. This brings us to the consent ordinances.
We have to vote on?
I'm sorry.
That was really?
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to go back to the main motion. Do we have a discussion on the main, main motion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Can we clarify what we're voting on?
The, we voted, just voted on Mr. Bud Matts' amended motion. Now we're going to vote on the original motion.
We're voting on the ordinance as amended.
On the ordinance as amended.
Okay.
Are there clarifications?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The ordinance is to remove, is to eliminate the sunset clause. The motion, the amendment was to extend it for a year. So we're voting on extending this for one year.
Correct, for one year.
Okay.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Banjer?
No.
Deistis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
With six approved and one against, it does pass. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda for ordinances. It consists of five items, B through F. Does any alderman wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Cannon?
C, please.
Mr. Deistis?
D and E.
Is it D or E?
B is in Boy, E is in Edward.
Okay. That leaves E and F. So the chair, the chair declares it an order for one motion to consider those two ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Deistis has made it, has been seconded.
C, D, E. I'm doing B, D, and F.
Just doing D and F? Yes. They pulled B, C, and D, so we're just doing E and F. Okay. Ordinance E, amend the city of Rolling Meadows' personnel and rules and regulations.
Mike pulled C.
John pulled E.
And B and E.
I pulled item B, Boy, and E, Edward.
Thank you, sorry.
And Mike pulled C.
Okay, after the clarification, that means that we are voting on consent agenda for D and F. So do we need, we need, we need a motion to approve D and F as a consent agenda? Okay, so. Okay, so let's bring this back. We voted for D.
Who made the motion?
It's been made and seconded.
Who?
Who made the motion?
Deistis.
Deistis, it's been seconded. Okay.
Okay.
Now we vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Banjer?
Yes.
Deistis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Seven approved and none opposed, it goes forward. This brings us to ordinance B. This ordinance, to amend the city code for small cell tower and tower right-of-way sitting ordinance. This ordinance, if adopted, would provide the city with control of these small cell towers within limitations imposed by the pending legislation. The ordinance can be amended in the future depending on the outcome of the pending legislation. In the meantime, the city would have regulations in place. Is there a motion to move this forward?
So move, Mayor.
And it has been seconded. Mr. Deistis, you asked us to be pulled?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that this is what the state is discussing with relation to whatever they call it, Statute 1451. So, and this has nothing to do with the height of a freestanding tower. Is that confirmed?
Mayor? Yes. Mr. Deistis?
Yes, you are correct, but let me just make it further clear that that legislation is still pending, so it hasn't been actually adopted yet. Okay.
Any further discussion?
I do have one other question.
Mr. Deistis?
Thank you. Is this part of what planning and zoning will be discussing after a meeting tomorrow?
No.
Okay.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Banjer?
Yes.
Deistis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, that does pass. That brings us to ordinance C. Amend the comprehensive zoning code antenna. This ordinance, if adopted, would reduce the height of both commercial and non-commercial antennas in the city from the current permitted height of 75 feet to 45 feet. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on the attached proposed ordinance on December 5th, 2017. Request is made to give the ordinance a first reading pending findings and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission on whether the antenna height limitation should be reduced from 75 feet to 45 feet. Do I have a motion?
So move, Mayor.
Ms. Majikis has made that and has been, do I have a second? It has been seconded. Mr. Cannon, you pulled it, so you have first choice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of what happened last week, we all thought, sitting at this table, that planning was going to address this issue, and they have not addressed it yet. I think we're preempting that if we go ahead and do anything tonight. So my proposal would be to postpone this until they come back with a recommendation to us. It's, that's proper order, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Ms. Majikis?
I...
I pulled item B, boy, and E, Edward.
Thank you, sorry.
And Mike pulled C.
Okay, after the clarification, that means that we are voting on consent agenda for D and F. So do we need, we need a motion to approve D and F as a consent agenda? Okay, so let's bring this back.
Who made the motion?
It's been made and seconded.
Who made the motion?
Who made the motion?
Deestis.
Deestis, it's been seconded. Okay.
Okay.
Now we vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Are we going to mention what the ordinance are that we're talking about, we're voting on?
Ordinance D is, ordinance D is to approve a text amendment modifying the notification requirements for public hearing. This ordinance if adopted would require signage be posted for all public hearings being requested. The signs would be created and mounted by Public Works and be available to petitioners for a $100 fee, refundable once the sign is returned in acceptable conditions to Public Works. F, ordinance designate an area of the city of Rolling Meadows as a conservation area in need of renewal at 2550 Gulf Road. This ordinance if adopted would designate the property commonly known as 2550 Gulf Road, Rolling Meadows, Illinois, as a conservation area which will be supported, will support the property owner's Class 7B tax incentive to be filed with the property owner's Class 7B tax incentive application. Clerk will now call the roll.
Gallo?
Still A.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Seven approved and none opposed, it goes forward. This brings us to ordinance B. This ordinance, to amend the city code for small cell tower and tower right-of-way sitting ordinance. This ordinance if adopted would provide the city with a control of these small cell towers within limitations imposed by the pending legislation. The ordinance can be amended in the future depending on the outcome of the pending legislation. In the meantime, the city would have regulations in place. Is there a motion to move this forward?
So moved, Mayor.
And it has been seconded. Mr. Deestis, you asked us if we pulled?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that this is what the state is discussing with relation to whatever they call it, statute 1451. So, and this has nothing to do with the height of a freestanding tower. Is that confirmed?
May I?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, you are correct, but let me just make it further clear that that legislation is still pending, so it hasn't been actually adopted yet. Okay.
Any further discussion?
I do have one other question.
Mr. Deestis.
Thank you. Is this part of what planning and zoning will be discussing at their meeting tomorrow?
No.
Okay.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, that does pass. That brings us to ordinance C, amend the comprehensive zoning code antenna. This ordinance if adopted would reduce the height of both commercial and non-commercial antennas in the city from the current permitted height of 75 feet to 45 feet. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on the attached proposed ordinance on December 5, 2017. Request is made to give the ordinance a first reading pending findings and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission on whether the antenna height limitation should be reduced from 75 feet to 45 feet. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Mr. Majikis has made that and has been, do I have a second? It has been seconded. Mr. Cannon, you pulled it, so you have first choice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of what happened last week, we all thought, sitting at this table, that planning was going to address this issue, and they have not addressed it yet. I think we're preempting that if we go ahead and do anything tonight. So my proposal would be to postpone this until they come back with a recommendation to us. It's, that's proper order, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Ms. Majikis?
This has been postponed a couple of times already, and I understand that planning and zoning is talking about tomorrow, but this is a first reading also. And yes, we do listen to planning and zoning, but we haven't always agreed with planning and zoning also. So I'd like to see us move forward on a first reading. We will then, when it comes up for second reading, have heard what planning and zoning had. We don't need to delay it another meeting down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Majikis. Any other comments, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I want to say I do agree with Alderman Cannon in the fact that we should probably support the processes in which we follow prudence with, and so I will be supporting Alderman Cannon with the process of listening to zoning board from tomorrow and postponing this until we get their feedback.
Mr. Deestis?
I have to jump on that bandwagon as well. I think if the council votes on this matter tonight, there's only, we have three options, essentially, as I see it. We can vote and say yes, which could unduly influence planning and zoning, and they might just say, well, the council said yes, so we're just going to go ahead and kind of whitewash it through. If we say no, then they don't discuss it at all. So I think the only viable alternative we have at this point is to follow suit with Mr. Cannon and postpone it until our next meeting and hear what planning and zoning says after they've vetted all out.
Thank you. Are there other comments?
Just for the record, we get a motion, a second to Alderman Cannon's motion to postpone until January the 9th?
Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. Deestis, you made that?
Yes.
Seconded, had the motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion before we vote on the motion to postpone?
Yes.
Yes, Mr.?
By postponing, by postponing this, we take and tie the hands of those who are forced to approve the permit for the 75-foot tower that's already in hand. So if we sit on this, there will be a tower in the park, and it won't really matter what we talk about tomorrow or the following week. So because the application is in and it has to be approved or disapproved within 90 days, we have taken, we've already made the decision then to say no by postponing it. It's my understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Bud Matts.
I don't think that's true. Should we share that with the full council for disclosure?
Ask Mr. McCall to clarify.
I apologize. If the, if we postpone this tonight, actually because the Planning and Zoning Commission postponed it from December the 5th until tomorrow evening, and the plan was to be able to adopt this ordinance prior to the expiration of the 90-day period for the approval or denial of this particular permit, which was received by the city on October the 9th, that 90-day clock stops on January the 7th. Regardless of what you do tonight, give it a first reading, you won't have it back for a second reading until your meeting on January the 9th, absent a special meeting. So as far as the Park District antenna is concerned, it's, this will have nothing to do with it.
So it's nothing about the Park District as far as we won't be able to stop their plan, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Unless there's a special meeting.
That's correct.
So there's a motion on the table, and it's been seconded to postpone this until our next meeting. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Deestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
No.
Majikis?
No.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
That gives us five in favor and two opposed. And so it'll be brought back.
Yeah, January 9th.
It'll be brought back January 9th. That brings us to ordinance E, to amend the city of rolling metals personnel rules and regulations with respect to its policy against discrimination and harassment, including sexual harassment. Public Act 100-0554 was signed by Governor Rauner and became law on November 16th. This act amends the state officials and employees ethics acts, includes section 70-5, which pertains to government entities. For municipalities, the law requires each entity to adopt an ordinance or resolution establishing a policy to prohibit sexual harassment within 60 days of the new law or by January 16th, 2018. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Deestis has made it, has it been seconded? It's been seconded. Mr. Deestis, you brought this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've gone through this, and I am wholeheartedly in agreement with this. However, I would like to make an amendment that wherever it says employees, that we add the words and elected officials and appointed committee members. This way, all residents and all employees know that everyone, this counts for everyone, whether they be an employee, whether they be an elected official, or whether they be a nominated committee person. So that's my motion, to add that wording in wherever it says employees.
Okay, Mr. McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Deestis, what I would suggest, and I appreciate your motion, the, you know, the state's mandated that we adopt this ordinance by the middle of next month. What I would suggest is we can come forward with an ordinance that incorporates what you want without disrupting the amendment to the personnel code that's proposed by this ordinance, if it's all right with you. I'd like to keep this intact, free of amendments, and come back on January the 9th with an ordinance that addresses your concerns.
Okay, I can live with that. Like I said, my biggest concern is that it didn't specifically state elected officials, and it didn't specifically say appointed members. So I want to make sure that that's included in there.
It wasn't designed to, but with your amendment, we can, with your thoughts, we can bring forward something that addresses that.
I'm fine until January 9th.
Okay, sir, withdrawing your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes. With seven in favor and none opposed, that moves forward. This brings the council to new business, the motion to approve the payments of bills and warrant. The next item of business is the warrant for 121917 as presented by the Finance Department. Is there a motion to approve that warrant? Mr. Baner has made it, has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk, clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Bud Matts?
And I'm H.
Sorry.
H.
H. So that, so that the chair declares it, declares it in order to consider the following five, I, J, K, L, and N. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Deestis has made it, it has been seconded. I, resolution number 17-R-143, grant preliminary approval of a two-lot subdivision for a property known as 4190 at 4200 Euclid Avenue in the M1 Manufacturing District. This resolution if adopted would grant preliminary approval of a two-lot subdivision for property known as 4190 and 4200 Euclid Avenue. At its meeting held on Tuesday, December 5, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 9-0 to give preliminary approval of the proposed two-lot subdivision for the property at 4190 and 4200 Euclid Avenue in the M1 Manufacturing District. J, resolution number 17-R-144, award contract for the carpet replacement, the police administration area. This resolution if adopted would approve a contract with cutting-edge carpets and floors located at 2510 Illinois Route 176, Unit 1, Crystal Lake 614 for floor covering replacements in the police department administration area. K, resolution number 17-R-145, approve a rental agreement with the high school district 14. This resolution if adopted would approve a rental agreement with the high school district 214 for an event to showcase the city's business and the community. L, resolution number 17-R-146, update the current city of rolling metals emergency operations plan. This resolution if adopted would update the current emergency operations plan for the city of rolling metals. N, resolution number 17-R-148, approve agreement for the property use with the community church. This resolution if adopted would approve an agreement between the church, between the city and the rolling metals community church, which provides for the city use of portions of the church property for the city markets and block party events. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that will move forward. Resolution H, number 17-R-142, grant preliminary approval of a two-lot subdivision for a property known as 2600 Benton Street, Benton Fairfax Southeast Corner on the R1 Single Family Residential District. This resolution if adopted would grant preliminary approval of a two-lot subdivision for property known as 2600 Benton Street. As its meeting held on Tuesday, December 5, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 9-0 to give preliminary approval of the proposed two-lot subdivision for the property at 2600 Benton Street in the R1 Single Family Residential District. Do we have a motion to move this forward? Mr. Deestis has made that, it has been seconded. Mr. Bud Matts, you have pulled it, you have first opportunity.
I would request that we sub, approve this subdivision, subject to a 15-foot drainage and public utility easement on the easternmost property line, as recommended by the staff in their original planning and zoning summary on November 27th. As a neighbor who lives next door to this property, I'm well aware of where the water pools and doesn't on this lot, which is next door to mine. I recommend and attest, I can attest to the problem with the water drainage. The recommendation by staff is not overreaching and will benefit the eventual owner of the subdivided parcel. Whoever owns that house will want to have that 15-foot easement so that they don't have water against their foundation. Other than this amendment, let me be clear, I have no objection to this subdivision in any way, shape, or form, and I look forward to having two new neighbors.
Okay. Do we have a second to Mr. Bud Matts amendment? Mr. Veenbos, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Baner?
Thank you. We had rejected their three-lot subdivision, and I get the feeling that they were willing with those changes to do a lot and make accommodations, and I noticed the changes that they, that those changes had disappeared from this, and I imagine it's because they didn't, they didn't get their change. I do notice that we've been talking about listening to planning and zoning tonight, and they're the ones who actually eliminated that recommendation and supported the 10-foot easement. So I'll be voting against this amendment, just because I kind of understand what the developer was doing. They were willing to bend over backwards to, to get their, their original platted subdivision changed to a three-lot subdivision, and since we sent them walking, they just want to do things by the original recommendation. So I have no problem with that 10-foot easement, and I'll vote against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baner. Any other discussion? Mr. Deestis?
Do we know why, I didn't read this in that much detail, why planning and zoning changed from 15 to 10?
Mr. Vogel, were you there for that meeting?
Staff recommended 15 to give us greater flexibility should there be a future drainage improvement that involves neighbors to the south and to the east. The, trying to speak for the Planning and Zoning Commission, they felt that because it was speculative in nature, not knowing whether we ever would need that additional five feet that they went about recommend, or recommended it at the 10 feet that the petitioner is proposing.
So, so the easement is speculative in nature, and we don't know if it will need to be, and easement is just, I mean, if it was 10 feet and the future occupant put a fence there on the 10-foot part of the easement, we could rip it out if we had to get back there. But if it wasn't on the easement, then we really can't do that without their permission, and then we would have to replace whatever we went in and removed.
Well, fences are generally put on property lines and subject to being removed should we need to access the easement for any utilities that are there. The 10-foot utility easements, or you should say utility and drainage easements that are typical, such as on this proposed development, can be used for drainage swales, it can be used to put pipes in, they're typically used by the phone company, gas, electric cable companies, all of them have, will have rights to use it if they need to and with subject approval of the city. It may be that if there is a future drainage improvement needed there to assist the drainage problems that are adjacent, that that could be accommodated within the 10-foot easement. But we really don't know that for certain, and staff just felt a certain level of comfort in asking for an additional five just to give us better flexibility if there's an improvement. There's no guarantee that there ever will be an improvement, because over the years the homeowners in that area haven't ever come to an agreement on how to proceed, but we simply at staff asked for it for greater flexibility.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel. Deestis, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I mean, I think, yes, it answered my question, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis?
Yes.
And Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
No.
Deestis?
No.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
It passes five to two. So that brings us back to the original resolution. Number 17-R-142, do we have a motion to move this one forward as amended?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
And it has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion with the amendment? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Thank you, that does move, that does move forward. That brings us to resolution M, number 17-R-147, the award of the annual water meter contract. This resolution if adopted would authorize the waiver of bids. And B, award a contract for the purchase of water meters in various sizes for use as replacement in new construction in fiscal year 2018. Do we have a move, motion to move that resolution forward? Mr. Bud Matts has made it, has been seconded, thank you. Is that, Mr. Cannon, you pulled it, so you have first choice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd like to just ask a couple of questions of Fred. You know, I, after reading this write-up, we've been using HD Supply Works for these for a number of years. What concerns me a little bit is that they have territorial pricing on their products, which means the manufacturer we have chosen will not allow anybody else to bid on those products. Is that a correct assumption on my part?
It's generally correct, yes.
Are there other companies that could provide similar quality items for us?
The difficulty is the compatibility of the items, meters, and other equipment that we have may not be compatible, so it really is a, not only a territorial thing that we can't request, can't get proposals from other vendors. Generally, they're going to be more distant to begin with, but to look at other products compromises the whole system of our meter technology.
So the manufacturer does not allow you to go to like, say, Peoria and get a guy out there to vote on, or to bid on it?
Generally, the Peoria vendor wouldn't give us prices on it because of respect for the territorial pricing.
So we're locked in this forever, is basically what you're saying?
We have been for many years, and unless we would look to change our whole meter program, you know, over the course of a number of years to go to a different vendor, but it's quite possible that different meter vendors might have such similar situations, we don't know that for sure, but it's typical.
Thanks for the answer. I guess in the future, I'd really like to see us try to avoid situations like this, because I think it really puts us at a disadvantage. I mean, they could, they could basically charge whatever they want, and we're almost forced to buy them, and that's just not a position I'd like to see the city put themselves in. So thank you for your answers.
Any more questions, Mr. Cannon?
That's it, I'm done.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner?
Yes.
Diestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, it does, this resolution does move forward. This now brings us to mayor appointments. Hold on, sorry. Hold on. Sorry, Mike, I don't want to keep you from, page went over that quickly, so. Resolution number 17-R-149, award contract for the 2018 park tree, park tree maintenance. This resolution, if adopted, would award a contract for forestry maintenance services covering fiscal year 2018. Services to be provided include tree pruning, tree removal, stump grinding, and disposal of tree and wood waste generated by the Public Works Forestry Department. Do we have a motion to move this resolution forward? Thank you, Mr. Magikis, and it has been seconded. Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd like to direct my questions to Fred again. When I saw this, I was a bit confused. I thought that we were, we had the ash borer thing more or less behind us, and I thought part of the reason in the past we decided to get outside tree pruning was because our guys were so busy taking down ash bores. Last year, we made a major investment in this department with a new truck with a, with a grappling arm on it. I think we really upgraded their, their equipment dramatically, but yet here I see we're still going up to an outside vendor for tree pruning. Is, I guess the question is, is this going to be an ongoing program, or is this the last year of this, or where are we at with this?
The city has, for many years, even long prior to the Emerald Ash Borer matter, secured the services of outside vendors to assist us with tree pruning, block trimming, as we often call it, simply because our staff and the time that is involved, we can't keep up with over a long term to do a tree pruning cycle every five to seven years, as is recommended and necessary. So I would expect, Alderman Cannon, that we would, in the future, seek to have some assistance from outside vendors, maybe, maybe not to the extent that we are now, but we're trying to keep with our cycle. We did get a bit behind because of the Emerald Ash Borer. This is the third year of the three-year bid that we received back in early 2016. We do have the option in future years to either award the contract to this vendor with their having the ability to put a price increase proposal together, or we can reject that and go out for bids again and, for the 2019 cycle and beyond. So, to go back to answer your question totally, I would expect that we would always look to have some assistance for block pruning, but maybe not as much moving forward several years out.
Okay, I guess the other question I would ask in conjunction with that is, in the past, I was under the impression that we, we tried to prune a block every seven years, and that we had enough staff on board to accomplish that. I guess that's no longer true, or did I misunderstand?
I'm not sure that it ever was true to be able to accomplish that cycle with, with the staff that we've got for forestry.
So I guess, percentage-wise, how much of the city can we do ourselves with them, you know, in light of the fact that the ash borer is going now? I know, I understand the big trees are a problem, I, everybody understands that, but with just tree pruning, about how much of the city could we do without outside help? Could you even give a percentage at all?
I'd hesitate to give a percentage at this point, but I can tell you that we can get that information for you, and that we are planning likely in January, February, to give the city council a final report on the Emerald Ash Borer and the costs associated with it, and I'd be happy to put such information together and include it based on what you're asking for in that report.
Okay, thank you for the answers, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Diestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed, that resolution moves forward. This now brings us to mayor, mayoral appointments. We have an opening on the police pension board earlier this week. I sent out the information to all members on the council about Mark Nanini. Just for those at home, he is the Director of Finance Treasurer for the city of Crystal Lake, is where he's been in the past. He was also Director of Finance for the city of Rolling Meadows, Comptroller for the Village of Niles, and presently, he is the Chief Financial Officer for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in Oak Brook, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve this appointment? Mr. Magikis? Cannon has made that, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed, that resolution moves forward. This now brings us to mayor, mayoral appointments. We have an opening on the police pension board earlier this week. I sent out the information to all members on the council about Mark Nanini. Just for those at home, he is the Director of Finance Treasurer for the city of Crystal Lake, is where he's been in the past. He was also Director of Finance for the city of Rolling Meadows, Comptroller for the Village of Niles, and presently, he is the Chief Financial Officer for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in Oak Brook, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve this appointment? Mr. Magikis? Cannon has made that, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed, that resolution moves forward. This now brings us to mayor, mayoral appointments. We have an opening on the police pension board earlier this week. I sent out the information to all members on the council about Mark Nanini. Just for those at home, he is the Director of Finance Treasurer for the city of Rolling Meadows, Comptroller for the Village of Niles, and presently, he is the Chief Financial Officer for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in Oak Brook, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve this appointment? Mr. Magikis? Cannon has made that, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed, that resolution moves forward. This now brings us to mayor, mayoral appointments. We have an opening on the police pension board earlier this week. I sent out the information to all members on the council about Mark Nanini. Just for those at home, he is the Director of Finance Treasurer for the city of Rolling Meadows, Comptroller for the Village of Niles, and presently, he is the Chief Financial Officer for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in Oak Brook, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve this appointment? Mr. Magikis? Cannon has made that, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diestis?
Absolutely, yes.
With seven days, no days, that appointment is approved. I have no proclamations. Does the city clerk have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Gallagher, you lucky person, community items of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's topics to mention, we'll, we'll go through them. There are several. Reminder that the Planning and Zoning Commission will have, will be having a special meeting on Wednesday, December 20th, at 7:30 PM in City Council Chambers, so that's tomorrow evening. There are four public hearings tentatively scheduled, and they consist of the following. The first is a preliminary approval of a three-lot subdivision for the property located at 2819 to 2915 Kirchhoff Road, C2 Commercial, Andrew Mao Ryan Homes Incorporated, petitioner. The second item is the amendment, an amendment to the city of Rolling Meadows Comprehensive Plan and Rezoning Request from C2 Commercial to R4 General Residential for the southern, approximately nine acres of property located at 2819, 2019 Kirchhoff, 2915 Kirchhoff Road, Andrew Mao Ryan Homes Incorporated, petitioner. Third item, preliminary approval of a planned development for property located at 2819, 2915 Kirchhoff Road, C2 Commercial, Andrew Mao Ryan Homes Incorporated, petitioner. And the fourth item, and final item, is an antenna discussion, city of Rolling Meadows is the petitioner. The second item, topics to mention, Fourth Annual Police Department Social Media Holiday House Contest Campaign is set to run through December 26th. The police department has a campaign to allow residents to promote their holiday decorated house. Pictures, photos can be submitted through police officers on patrol, or a picture can be submitted to the police department, generic email account at rollingmeadowspolice@gmail.com. For more information, please visit the police department Facebook page, or contact the police department at 847-255-2416. Big thank you to everyone who participated in this year's United States Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots program. A big thank you to everyone who participated in this year's police department food drive conducted on Saturday, December 9th. And a very special thank you to everyone who participated in this year's tree lighting ceremony conducted on Thursday, December 7th. A special thank you to Public Works for lighting the season, lighting the way for the season. Also thank you to all the volunteers who worked the dinner that followed. The next item, Fire Department Keep the Wreath Red displays are at both fire stations. The program is a public awareness initiative that encourages residents to protect their families by preventing fires caused by seasonal decorations. The wreaths hanging at the fire stations begin the season illuminated with red bulbs. Any fire in Rolling Meadows caused by holiday decorations will be represented by a white bulb. For more information on holiday safe, fire safety, call 847-397-3352. The December E news and views can be found on the city's webpage, that's the city's newsletter. And next item, have you visited the Rolling Meadows Museum lately, located at 3100 Central Road? If you have not, please plan on stopping by on Sundays from 1 PM to 4 PM. The museum is currently decorated for the season. On Sunday, January 7th, 2018, the museum will be conducting in open house, and there's always cookies, and you can see the holiday 1950s tree. The city hall and public works will be closed on Friday, December 22nd, and Monday, December 25th, in observance of the holiday season. On Friday, December 22nd, garbage and recycling will be collected early. Please have your refuse and recycling out of the curb no later than 6 AM for the week of December 25th. Refuse and recycling route collections will be delayed one day. The city hall and public works will be closed on Monday, January 1st, in observance of the new year. Refuse and recycling collection will be delayed one day all week. Public works will provide Christmas tree pickup service to all refuse customers during the weeks of January 1st and January 8th. Residents should remove lights, tinsel, and ornaments, and place trees at the curb side facing the street on their regular refuse collection days. The city Swank and Elgin Recycling are conducting a holiday light, extension cord, and wire recycling program again. Collection boxes are outside of city hall, just located outside. Items that are accepted include the following items, mini, mini lights or Italian lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, LED lights, extension cords, house wire, computer wire, et cetera. All colors and lengths will be accepted. The city cannot, however, accept garland, live wreaths, wreaths, or other non-recyclable items. The program does run through February 16th, 2018. The last item on topics to mention, future topics at January committee meetings coming up, due to how early this is, and the agendas are not completed at this time, but two meetings coming up. Economic Development is scheduled for Tuesday, January 2nd, at 6 PM in council chambers, and Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled for Tuesday, January 2nd, at 7:30 PM in council chambers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher, and you're up again for new businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are six new businesses on the list for November, and one that we'd like to highlight is the Anytime Fitness that opened in November, and located at the Jewel Shopping Plaza. We're thrilled to have them in the area, and that's the report. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to the staff at Traffic Advisory Report. Mr. Vogel?
Thank you, Mayor. Just three items to bring the council's attention from the meeting held for December, on December 6th. The Vermont Euclid Crosswalk Safety Concerns that we've had, we put on hold a couple months ago as we were looking to potentially solve some of that with the bike path application. With not doing that at this point, we will revisit it with the Cook County Highway Department staff. They had several ideas to possibly improve the crossing safety there, and we'll work with them and hopefully get something addressed later in 2018. Second item, Old Plum Grove Road, Rockaway Street, request for pedestrian crosswalk. This is at Plum Grove Junior High School. We initially had some reports that there were a number of students that were crossing at that location. Police department investigated and did not observe many, but I've been able to clarify the specific times of day, that that's a concern, and further investigation will be made, and we'll discuss that, I'm sure, at the January meeting. Thirdly, just as an update, we collected traffic count data on Ring Road and Apollo Drive adjacent to the new Squibb Drive, and before it opened last month. We will use that data and compare that to traffic counts that we will obtain in the spring of 2018, and then probably later in 2019 with school health, when they open their facility. We are planning to do some traffic signal and lane adjustment improvements at the intersection of Ring Road and Golf later in 2018 to accommodate the traffic and the fact that Squibb Drive now allows for traffic from that whole complex, including the Gallagher site, to access Ring Road and vice versa, if anybody wants to use Apollo. So we'll continue to monitor that and take necessary actions to control the traffic flows and the turns, and make sure people get out of that facility with the green time on Golf Road being a restriction. It's a rather sensitive area to work on, but we'll continue to update the committee in that regard. So that's the report for December.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel. Ms. Gallagher, third quarter financials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Within the council packet, we do have the third quarter financial report, and it is the third quarter financial statements through September 30th, 2017. This report is a budget comparison report, and it's presented on a cash basis or modified accrual counting, so just keep in mind, we're doing our audit through December 2017, and then we present that in June of 2018, so there are some adjustments that we make. This report does cover the general fund, all the funds, but primarily the general fund, the refuse fund, and the utilities fund. I'm going to skip through the memo, there's a lot of information within the memo itself, but skipping through to the general fund income statement, the detailed statement, all-in for September 30th, the revenues coming in are 26.9 million, about 10% better than budget for the year, and expenditures all-in are coming at 25.9% nine million, or 5% above budget. And a couple things to note for the revenue side, we are monitoring sales tax. Of course, we've got a little bit of an adjustment from the state of Illinois and their administrative fee, we are monitoring those things. Telecom is down slightly, electric utility tax is down slightly.